Thank you all for coming. I now call to order the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors Business Meeting, Tuesday, May 17th, 2022, 7:00 PM at the Board Meeting, 39 Bank Street, Chatham, Virginia. Ms. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Cheshire?
Here.
Mr. Dalton?
Here.
Mr. Dudley?
President.
Mr. Scares?
Here.
Mr. Warren?
Yeah.
Mr. Barksdale?
Here.
Mr. Ingram?
President, thank you so much. Ladies and gentlemen, if you would, let's take a moment of silence and after that we'll have our Pledge of Allegiance. If you would stand for our pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are there any items to be added to the agenda?
Kayla, this is all at the end, right? Okay.
Okay, Mr. Dalton, I think you have something to be added. Go ahead, sir.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda as follows. Add the CPNT alternate member to the consent agenda as item 17. Add the following items to the matters from the work session. It will be 13A, Wayside Park funding, 13B, reassessment, RFP approval, 13C, the revised Commonwealth Health Care, Commonwealth Home Health Care, LPA, 13D, Project Dazwell Moral Obligation Resolution 2022-05-07, 13C, the county administrator search to move items 12A and 12B to the presentation as items 8D and AE.
Thank you, Mr. Dalton. What about a second on the items to be added? Okay. I'll second. Thank you, Mr. Cheshire. Any discussion, gentlemen? All right. If you would, go ahead and cast your vote. Kayla, mine is cutting up again, so...
I'll get yours verbally, Mr. Ingram.
Thank you, ma'am. Been here since 2:00, and it works flawlessly until right now.
And Mr. Ingram, what is your vote?
Oh, absolutely, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
What about a motion to approve the agenda?
Before I make a motion to approve the agenda?
Sure.
I think that 7K, we probably, nothing major, but we probably need to move that because there is some typos, typographical things in it that needs to be cleaned up before it's approved.
Okay.
And then I have a couple of comments about a couple of the items not requested and changed and just asking to maybe for the commission to revisit them, to tweak them just slightly.
Okay. Kayla, how do you want to handle that?
All right, so, Mr. Warren, if you want to make that as a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we move it to, what was the last one? 13?
K? No.
13F?
Yeah.
All right.
Let's do that as 12C, if that's okay. That'd be new business.
It doesn't matter, no.
Okay.
Okay. What about a second on that?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Dudley. Any comments, gentlemen? All right, cast your vote.
You can go ahead and cast your vote. Thank you.
Okay, that has passed. All right, now, let's see, we passed consent, right, Kayla?
Now, we're going to do an approval of the agenda, since we made that amendment.
Okay, let me back up here. All right, what about a motion to approve the agenda?
I make a motion, we approve the agenda as presented with the additions and the change.
Okay, thank you, sir. What about a second? Mr. Barksdale, thank you, sir. Go ahead and hit you a button over there. I think we're up and running. Any discussion on this, gentlemen? If not, cast your vote. Okay, where are we at now, Kayla?
Now, we're going to vote for the consent agenda. One more vote.
What about a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended?
Yes, I'll make that motion.
What about a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Barksdale. Any discussion? Okay, cast your vote.
I'm going to edit that really quick.
Okay.
All right, now, you should be good.
Okay, we're good, go on to the presentation?
Yes, sir.
All right. Up first would be Dr. Mark Jones or Martha Walker representing our school system. Dr. Walker, come on up, please. Good to see you, how are you?
Hi, yes. I'm Martha Walker, and I am currently the Chair of the Pennsylvanians for a Brighter Future for our county school system. Dr. Jones is actually meeting with a group of volunteers on the campaign committee right now, or he would be here, so he sends his greetings and apologies. First of all, thank you for supporting the one-cent sales tax referendum that will be on the November 8 ballot. We know how important that is, and everyone in this audience and everyone that is watching online understands that one cent, one penny, will generate $3.8 million each year for the 19 years that we will be allowed to have that one-cent sales tax added. Danville has already passed this, they passed this last November. Pennsylvania County's referendum failed by 14 votes. We have a second chance. This will be the last time, we think, we will get a chance to do this. And so, individuals, our voters, need to understand the importance, and you, because of your support or helping us tell that story. You know that 10 elementary schools will be focused on safety and getting rid of those trailers by building new classrooms. We heard just last week that one of the trailers was being moved for the new system, air conditioning system unit that's putting in. It was sold to a business. They were getting ready to move it so the business could take it, and when they began to move it, the termites had eaten the foundation so much that all they could do was give the money back and tear it down. And that is the condition of where these units have gone. They have got to leave our school property, we know that, and the only way we're going to get this funding is to share the load through a sales tax. And so, each one of you have already received a copy of the flyer that has the details. For the audience here this evening, I'm going to leave copies out on the podium, and I hope they will pick it up. We also have the word, we are willing to come and speak at any organization you would like for us. We've already been to three town council meetings, the Chamber of Commerce, six schools to start with, and we are going to the fire departments as fast as they will open their doors to us. So, we want to talk to our voters, because last year, they didn't understand, and that's what we kept hearing, we didn't understand. So, we are about the business of telling the story, and we need your help. I even brought you yard signs and left them outside, so I hope you'll take them as you leave this evening. But, we're here for you, so please tell us what we can do and how we can help to get this word out. Any questions or comments y'all have for me?
I think not, but thank you so much for coming.
Thank you so much, and thank you for putting us always on your agenda. We will be here every month, I promise you.
Yes, ma'am, you're always welcome to come back. Thank you for what you do, thank you. Up next, this is a very special presentation, Mariah Shepherd. As she comes forward, she's the new executive director of Danville, Pennsylvania Cancer, and I was on that board for years, I'm now a lifetime member, that's their way of saying they get rid of old people. But, as a footnote, I would love to tell them that you are Jim Davis's daughter, who was our 911 director for many years, this is Jimmy's baby girl, so, Mariah, thank you for coming.
Mr. Chairman, Board of Directors, County Staff, just wanted to thank you for allowing me to be able to speak here today on behalf of the Board of Directors at Danville, Pennsylvania Cancer. We are a nonprofit organization that serves Danville and Pennsylvania County, been around since the mid-'70s, and we are community-supported. We do not receive any federal funds, we don't ask the taxpayers to give us anything, we are here through community grants, local foundations, and donations from people within the community. But, we're here today because of just a few different things. Number one, I've just started in this role, and I felt like it was important for us to come and speak with the Board of Directors. It was during the whole process, after my interview and after my hire, I've been auditing how our client base is, and a lot of our clients are currently in the city of Danville. Understanding that Pennsylvania County is still one of our mission markets, a very big piece of it, we wanted to make sure that we reached out to the Board of Directors to try and partner with you all to be able to reach within your specific districts, make plans on how we can work within your communities, and let your constituents know that we are a free organization for people who are undergoing cancer. We are not income-based in any respect at all, the only qualification is, do you live in Danville, do you live in Pennsylvania County, and are you actively undergoing cancer treatments? So, one of the reasons how come I'm here, Mr. Ingram kind of brought it forth earlier, but I am Jim Davis's daughter, and about five years ago, my dad went through kidney cancer. He was head of public safety here in Pennsylvania County for over 20 years, he was aware of Danville, Pennsylvania Cancer, but he never accessed their services, why? He thought that it was income-based. And so, it's important for us to break down those misconceptions within the community, that it's not income-based, it's based off of whether you have that active cancer going on that you're dealing with, and do you live here locally. And I think that within our communities, you know, as you all know, the state of Rhode, I mean, Pennsylvania County is just as large as the state of Rhode Island, so that's a large geographic territory for us to try to break apart, and that's why I wanted to meet with each of you all today, so that way we could talk about how we could best serve your constituency. Danville, Pennsylvania County helps provide emotional support through our coping group. We also have a class called Throw Paint at Cancer, where different cancer patients, their family, people who are supporting them can come together and have that emotional support group where they paint together. We do travel reimbursements, so while Danville, Pennsylvania Cancer does not pay for active treatment, what we will do is we will help them be able to get to their appointments. As you all know, the burden of gas is quite high. Right now, we have about 239, 240 different clients that we're serving. Last month, in the month of April, we paid out 27,000 miles' worth of reimbursements. Now, to put that into perspective, the circumference of the earth is only 24,000 miles, so in one month, people within our local community traveled far enough to appointments to circle the earth, and it was important for us to be able to reimburse that. Prescription aid, we also help work with any prescriptions that they have that are referred by their oncologists, we help cover those costs, and then just generic supplies, if they need wheelchairs or walkers, different types of nutritional supplements. We can give up to $500 a month in reimbursement, so that's about $6,000 a year per client. A lot of our clients don't utilize that, but some of them do, some of them might have one prescription, that's $500 out of pocket for them, and so it's important for us to be able to support them. So, as we are looking at how we can best reach into the county, one of the things that I did was I pulled some of the health metrics from the most recent health assessment that was done through the Health Collaborative. And within that, what you see here are two different maps, one of them is a map of your specific districts, and the other one is the prevalence of cancer within your districts, or it's not specific to your districts, but it kind of breaks down the prevalence of cancer based off percentages. And so, the darker the color, the higher percentage of cancer is within those areas. And so, that's why we wanted to come here today, because as I said, we know that a lot of our clients currently are mostly in the city of Danville, which means that we're missing out on so many of your constituents, and we want to work with you to be able to highlight the best avenues to reach into your communities, to make sure that the people that you're serving are served. We're not asking for any money in return, all we're asking is please help us connect to them, so that way we can get them the help that they need. Any questions?
Mariah, thank you for that presentation, and if you are a member of Danville, Pennsylvania Cancer, would you stand, please? Carol, I knew you were here, Carol works up in the circuit court, she's a board member, but it was a wonderful presentation, and thank y'all so much for being here, and take note of what Mariah said, it's like people north of Chatham get left out, they just don't know that Danville, Pennsylvania Cancer is there to help them. So, hopefully this message will be spread throughout our county, and like she said, if you need help, you just call, there's some survivors in this room, I think about Mr. Scares over here, who fought a pretty tough battle with cancer, so, it's beatable. But anyway, thank you so much for coming. Y'all take care. We've got another very special presentation, and after that, I'm going to introduce two resolutions. So, at this time, hold on one second.
We're going to do the resolutions first?
I'm seeing...
For Mr. Dalton's district?
Oh, Mr....
Yeah, if y'all want to come down to the front?
Yes, I'm so sorry.
That's all right.
It won't written here, so I'm...
It's okay.
My bad, I'm sorry. But anyway, you go ahead, sir.
I want to present the resolutions.
Yes, absolutely.
All right.
Yeah, if the whole board, yes, sir.
Okay, you got it. Sorry about that.
Mr. Ingram, if all y'all want to come down, yeah.
We will. Yeah, everybody down. We will. Get a picture. Okay. All right. Dr. Duffer, you want to come on down, we're going to present you a resolution here from the Board of Supervisors, thanking you for your years of service, and what a pillar you were to the community, and how well you served the people, and I know my mother hadn't felt good since you retired. All right, I'm going to read this out for you. Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors Resolution 2022-05-03, honoring Dr. Randolph Duffer's retirement. Virginia, the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors adopts the following resolution at its Board Business Meeting on May 17, 2022, whereas after 50 years of practice in medicine, Dr. Randolph Duffer walked away from his practice, private practice, to return to his agriculture roots as he enjoyed his retirements, and whereas Duffer came to Gruttner, Virginia 30 years ago with an eye to set down roots and serve those he felt connected through a common history of culture, and whereas Duffer grew up on a tobacco farm in Charlotte County, Virginia, and felt a kinship with those served in Gruttner and Pennsylvania County, Virginia. And whereas Duffer ran a private practice in family medicine, an old-fashioned-style office where patients could see him and his nurse across the receptionist desk and not separate by walls and computer screens, he resigned, become a doctor working for a hospital corporation in part so he could remain in charge of his time and how he interacted with his patients, and whereas he believed in taking time with his patients and he knew for drawing on the bid paper to break down the medical terminology into something his parents, the patients, could understand, and whereas during his time in Gruttner, Duffer had several medical students rotate through his office, and whereas Duffer's private practice would be missed by his patients, many of whom were also friends and neighbors as they were staples to the Gruttner community, and whereas Duffer was an asset and a loyal member of his community and faithfully performed his duties in a diligently and dependable manner. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board expresses its sincere appreciation to Duffer for his dedication of time towards medical community, congratulates him on a well-deserved retirement. Adopted this 17th day of May, 2022, Darrell W. Dalton, Callan's Gruttner Supervisor, William Vic Ingram, the Chairman, and Clarence Monday, Clerk of Pennsylvania County. Yes, sir, thank you.
You can't leave yet, I'm going out. How many in the audience this evening has been a patient of Dr. Duffer's? Let me see your hand. Let me tell you, look around, folks, this guy has helped some folks, and have you ever delivered a baby? Okay, he's been trying to deliver this baby for I don't know how long, and he's been trying to get rid of it, it just has not happened yet. But I'm going to tell you, and he read in the resolution that, "Dr. Duffer, when you go and have an appointment, say your appointment's at 10:00, you might get in there at 11:00, and then you might get out at 1:00," because he always takes time, and he cares so much about his patients, and when I say takes time, have you ever been in a doctor's office where there's a big thing and you have to get up on, and it's got a cushion on, it's got a paper on top? You understand what I'm saying? Well, he would write on that paper and describe all your medicines, but most of the time, he told me about the Civil War, and how much he hated government, and how much bird hunting he's done out in the Dakotas at his place, and maybe a couple times, we played tic-tac-toe on it. But at the end, Dr. Duffer would explain your situation, what's going on in your body, and then he would explain the medication, how that would affect your body and help your body. And, you know, I get up every morning, I want to share this with you, I get up every single morning, and right now, I'm in what's called the Book of Judges, I read my scriptures, and you go look yourself, in Judges, there's wisdom, knowledge, and understanding, and if you've ever had an appointment with Dr. Duffer, he's got the wisdom, he gives you the knowledge and the understanding before you leave the office. And I just want to say once again, and I think 50 years as a doctor, I'm going to ask everybody to stand, let's all give him a hand this evening, how about that? Thank you so much, appreciate you giving him that hand, and at this time, I'm going to give him an opportunity maybe to say a few words, is that okay, or you don't, I mean, you...
Very much.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
That's enough to give him a hand over. Thank you so much, Dr. Duffer, appreciate it again, thank you.
I knew Dr. Duffer, but he never worked on me, but I was named after Dr. Vixilio, so there were some resolutions that was prepared, because this is a special month, needless to say, and before I have a couple of special guests come and speak, I wanted to just highlight some of these proclamations, if you would. The first one is National Police Week, May 17 through, 11 through the 17th, I'm sorry, 2022, to recognize National Police Week 2022 and May 15 as National Peace Officers Memorial Day by honoring the service and sacrifice of those law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty while protecting our communities and safeguarding our democracy. I don't want to make you do it twice, but if you're currently serving in law enforcement, if you retired, would you please stand for us? Let's give these gentlemen a hand. Thank y'all so much. The second one is National Nurses Week. Any nurses here? And this is where we honor community action and stress the importance of their service to our community. Anybody here representing community action? Okay, all right. Caitlin, have I missed anything?
You're good.
Good, thank you so much. I'll get these back to you. Most of you know I'm retired law enforcement, and today is a bittersweet day because it marks 20 years that we lost Deputy Frankie Bettleton, who was shot and killed. He was murdered up on 58 West, truly one of my darkest days. But on a bright note, we're here to honor two troopers that died serving the citizens of this county. And so having said that, we have two very special guests that, that have driven a substantial distance to be with us. And I'd like for Colonel, retired Colonel Wayne Huggins to come forward and Mr. Bill Carrico, better name is Charles W. Carrico, Senior. Before these gentlemen speak, I asked the Colonel if he would have a resume sent to me, and it is so long that I'm not going to read it. But I will say that he has served us for more than 50 years, and it's just unbelievable what you have done, sir. Not only, only on a local but state and federal level, he has held a position as a Virginia State Trooper. He's been a member of the United States Secret Service on the executive protection detail, which if you know what that means, he's willing to die for whatever president he's protecting. He's been the sheriff of Fairfax County, Virginia, and as I said, the superintendent of Virginia State Police, also appointed director by President George Bush of the United States Department of Justice, National Institute of Corrections. And he served as the executive director of the Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies Incorporated. And he is soon to be the, I guess, retiring president of the Virginia State Police Association. So Colonel, did I leave anything out?
My grandmother once asked me, why can't you hold a job? So that's more than generous.
If you bring that mic up a little bit more, because somebody didn't hear that grandma joke.
Exactly. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you so very, very much for inviting us down on this particularly special occasion. And I just want to give you a quick overview of this tragic part of the history of the Virginia State Police. Since our inception, 66 Virginia State Troopers have paid the ultimate sacrifice giving their lives. The first of those was investigator Neville Hatcher, who was killed while arresting a murder suspect on August the 19th, 1928. Fast forward, the most recent Virginia State Trooper who was killed, Senator Carrico might mention a little bit more about Trooper Lucas Dow, a young man who was shot and killed on February the 4th, 2019 in Cumberland County while he was serving a, a search warrant. And as I mentioned, in between investigator Neville Hatcher and Trooper Lucas Dow, 64 other troopers have been killed in the line of duty. The two troopers that you are here tonight to consider paying tribute to are Trooper Henry Noel Harmon, who I believe his son is in the room, is one of the most unusual line of duty deaths. Trooper Harmon was shot in the neck while arresting a suspect in 1960. During my tenure as Superintendent of State Police, some 35 years later, in 1995, Trooper Harmon died as a direct result of the injury he had sustained and lived his life, those last 35 years essentially paralyzed from the neck down and died in 1995 as a result of that wound he had, had incurred 35 years earlier. The other trooper is Trooper Henry Murray Brooks, Jr., serving here in Pennsylvania County. And on June the 10th, 1956, while investigating a motor vehicle crash, was hit by a car and instantly killed. Those are the two troopers that you are hopefully honoring tonight. Of the 66 troopers who've been killed in the line of duty, approximately 30 of those troopers have been publicly memorialized in some way. And I'm going to tell you in just a second, some of the ways they have been memorialized. But it's been one of my personal goals, and I know it's a personal goal of Senator Carrico's because we've worked on this collectively and the State Police Association, is to eventually publicly memorialize all 66 of the men and women who've given their life serving the Commonwealth of Virginia as a Virginia State Trooper. How have they been memorialized? A variety of different ways. If you travel the interstates of Virginia, as I know you do, you've probably seen several bridges named in honor of troopers who have given their life in the line of duty. If you ever travel Route 13 in Powhatan County, between Route 60 and the Cumberland County line, that stretch of Route 13 memorialized Trooper Mike Walters, who was shot and killed in the city of Richmond five years ago. The National Guard Armory in Lexington is named in honor of Trooper Jerry Heinz, who was shot and killed on Interstate 81 back in the, in the late 80s. A rest area on Interstate 85 in Dinwiddie County was named after Trooper J. Walker, who was shot and killed by helping, believe it or not, a disabled vehicle. There is a bank building in Fork Union in Flavanna County where a trooper in 1935 was shot and killed while intervening in a bank robbery. That bank building has a bronze plaque on it that memorializes that trooper, Trooper Thompson. So there are a variety of ways that these troopers have been memorialized. We will continue to memorialize, attempt to memorialize this trooper. And what you're doing tonight may take us two steps closer to realizing our goal of memorializing all of them. And I mentioned that Senator Carrico has been a very, very valuable asset. And I'll let you introduce him, but before I do, I just want to mention that a number of the troopers who I have mentioned, while he was serving in the Virginia Senate, he carried the legislation that led to their memorialization. So again, on behalf of the Virginia State Police Association, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you so very, very much for affording us this opportunity, inviting us to make this presentation tonight. We truly appreciate it.
Thank you, Colonel. Appreciate you being here.
And you have a handout showing the oil portraits of the two troopers that, that were attempting to memorialize.
Thank you, sir. Along with Colonel Huggins is Bill Carrico. And Bill has been here before, some of you know him. I think he was down here with Congressman Good recently. But he was a Virginia State Trooper from March of 85 through June of 2000. And then he did something crazy, went into politics. And so he's into Virginia House of Delegates from 2002 to 2012. And then he went into the Senate 2012 to 2020. And then he took a private sector job, but he is the new president of the Virginia State Police Association, replacing Colonel Huggins, correct?
That's correct.
All right, sir. You have the floor.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for allowing us to be here tonight. Memorializing these men for the sacrifice they made to the Commonwealth is so vitally important to the families and the communities that they have served in, that they served during their time, while they were serving with the state police. Unlike Colonel Huggins, I was, I was a trooper. I'm a father of a trooper. So I understand the shoes that they walk through, the things they sacrifice and understand. I'll give you an incident. He, he spoke about Lucas Dow. In 2019, my last year there in the, in the General Assembly as a senator, my son and Lucas served on the tactical team together. And my son was in the, in 4th Division on their tactical team. Lucas was in 3rd Division. And they talked every day about calls that they were making going on. And my son had just finished a call in Grundy, and he was going to this call in Cumberland County. And they always texted each other to say, you know, how the call went and the things that, that occurred during that call to just glean off each other on how tactically to go through homes and so forth like that. My son called me, and it was about 10 o'clock at night, and he said, Dad, he said, I was talking to Lucas. We were texting back and forth. He said he was going on a call, and he came across the radio that one of them has been shot. And I've been trying to get ahold of Lucas, and I can't get ahold of him. And so I immediately called the Colonel at that time, and Colonel Settles confirmed that there had been a shooting and that one of the tactical team members had been injured. And I asked him how serious it was. He said, it's pretty serious and that it was Lucas Dow. So here's a father of a trooper who was once a trooper, who was working with a lot of these men that have been memorialized during my time in the General Assembly, trying to think about how to notify my son. Then the Colonel calls me back prior to me reaching out to my son and said that Lucas had died. So I had to call my son and tell him what had happened. But that's not the end of the story. Lucas Dow and my son became friends, not knowing that his mother and father and I were high school classmates. So I had to contact the people in Chilhawee, who's the mother and father, to go notify the mother and father that their son had been killed in Chatham County. And when Lucas's funeral occurred in Chilhawee that day, the citizens of that community lined the streets as they brought the body in. They lined the streets, the schools adjourned, they came out to honor this young man. And from that, Wayne and I began a process in which, when one of the state troopers that paid the ultimate sacrifice does this, and the boards agree that state pays to erect these signs for whatever location that that happens, because they were state employees giving their lives for the state of Virginia. And I have worked on many pieces of legislation for law enforcement in general, not just state police, but law enforcement. And I can tell you that the, the pride and the brotherhood and the family that they are goes further than anybody could ever imagine. And for you to memorialize something like this will be everlasting. It will be lasting for families and for people to never forget the sacrifice that they made. And we just appreciate you giving us a moment to speak and to allow us to speak to you about the importance of doing this. So thank you.
Thank you so much. If you gentlemen would stick around. I, I would, you can go and take a seat. I'm going to read the resolution honoring Trooper Brooks. His only son lives out in Colorado, so he couldn't be here. But then after that, I'm going to read one for Trooper Harmon, and Trooper Harmon's family is here. And I'd like to do that, and I hate to get you guys up again, but I'd love us to go down and have, have a picture and, and thank these gentlemen and have all the uniformed troopers that took time to be here to, to step up, if you would. This is a Resolution 2022-0504, which is in support of naming the Business U.S. Highway 29 North Bridge in Hurt, Virginia, the Trooper Henry Murray Brooks, Jr. Memorial Bridge. Virginia, at the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors Business Meeting on May 17, 2022, the following resolution was presented and adopted. Whereas the Board is committed to recognizing and celebrating the county's historical heritage and contributions made thereto by its citizens. And whereas Trooper Henry Murray Brooks, Jr., better known as Brooks, was a Virginia State Trooper who was killed in the line of duty while serving the county's citizens. And whereas Brooks was born in Charlottesville, Virginia. And whereas Brooks was a World War II veteran, serving in the United States Marine Corps, and he later served in the Korean War while enlisted in the United States Army. And whereas he joined the Virginia State Police on May 19, 1953, and was assigned to the county and was stationed in Gruttner, Virginia. And whereas on June 10, 1956, while investigating a crash on U.S. Highway 29, approximately three miles south of Alta Vista, Virginia, a motorist struck a parked car and then hit Trooper Brooks along with three other citizens. Whereas Trooper Brooks was taken to Lynchburg General Hospital, where he died of his injuries. Whereas Brooks was the 23rd Virginia State Trooper killed in the line of duty. Whereas the Virginia State Police saved countless lives by protecting county and Virginia's citizens through rigorous law enforcement and patrolling of state and county roadways. And every day, they brave ever-present danger to assist a stranded motorist to investigate gun, drug, and human trafficking, to stop public corruption, to bring closure to devastated families, and to stop dangerous driving and dangerous individuals. And whereas Brooks is an example of the dedication of the Virginia State Police, and it's fitting that the Board, our Board, remember his ultimate sacrifice. And whereas under 33.2-213 of the Code of Virginia, 1950 as amended, authorizes the Commonwealth Transportation Board to give suitable names to state highways, bridges, interchanges, and other transportation facilities, and change the names of any highways and bridges, interchanges, or other transportation facilities forming a part of the systems of the state highways. And whereas the same Virginia Code section further provides that the Virginia Department of Transportation shall place and maintain appropriate signs indicating the names of highways, bridges, interchanges, and other transportation facilities by the CTP, and requires that the cost of producing, placing, and maintaining such signs should be paid by the localities in which they are located. Now, therefore, be it hereby resolved that the Board fully and enthusiastically supports the naming of the Business U.S. Highway 29 North Bridge in Hurt, Virginia, the location of said bridge depicted in more detail on the map attached heretofore, and made a part fully hereof as a Trooper Henry Murray Brooks, Jr. Memorial Bridge. And be it further resolved that the county agrees to pay the cost of producing, placing, and maintaining the signs, calling attention to the naming. And be it finally resolved that a copy of this resolution be forwarded to the Brooks family, appropriate local VDOT officials, and the CTP Board for consideration, given under my hand this 17th day of May, 2022, William V. Ingram, Chairman, Clarence Monday, Clerk of the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors.
Mr. Chairman, I think we need a motion on that.
We sure do.
Yes, sir.
And I was, I was going to say, how grateful that I am that you, my colleagues, are going to unanimously pass these resolutions because it's so special, it's so heartfelt. And this is in, in Mr. Dudley's district, and I was going to ask if you'd be so kind to introduce the resolution.
Yes, sir, absolutely. I'd be glad to. And thank you all for the troopers that are sitting here. Guys, unbelievable when you go to work and don't know if you're coming home. And I just want to thank you, every one of you. Anybody in law enforcement, it's amazing what you guys do. Thank you so much. I'm going to give the motion now. I make a motion approving Resolution 2022-05-05, attached supporting naming the Route 50... Wait a minute. Is this the wrong one?
Business U.S. Highway 29 North Bridge at Hurt, Virginia.
Yep. Yes, as presented by the chairman. I'm sorry. I was just, I was reading, I'm sorry. Yes, sir.
All right. There's your motion. What about a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. I appreciate that. Any discussion, comments, gentlemen? If you would, cast your vote. calling attention to the naming. And be it finally resolved that a copy of this resolution be forwarded to the Brooks family, appropriate local VDOT officials and the CTP board for consideration, given under my hand this 17th day of May, 2022. William V. Ingram, Chairman, Clarence Monday, Clerk of the Pittsman County Board of Supervisors.
Mr. Chairman, I think we need a motion on that.
We sure do.
Yes, sir.
And I was, I was going to say, how grateful that I am that you, my colleagues, are going to unanimously pass these resolutions because it's so special, it's so heartfelt. And this is in Mr. Dudley's district. And I was going to ask if you'd be so kind to introduce the resolution.
I'd be glad to. And thank you all for the troopers that are sitting here. Guys, unbelievable when you go to work and don't know if you're coming home. And I just want to thank you, every one of you. Anybody in law enforcement, it's amazing what you guys do. Thank you so much. I'm going to give the motion now. I make a motion approving Resolution 2022-05-05, attached supporting naming the Route 50... Wait a minute. Is this the wrong one?
Business US Highway 29 North Bridge at Hurt, Virginia.
Yes, as presented by the chairman. I'm sorry. I was just, I was reading, I'm sorry. Yes, sir.
All right. There's your motion. What about a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. I appreciate that. Any discussion, comments, gentlemen? If you would, cast your vote. Okay, great. Thank y'all so much. This next resolution is 2022-05-05. It's in support of naming the Highway 57 Bridge in the Bannister District of Pittsman County, Virginia, the Trooper Henry Noel Harmon Memorial Bridge. Virginia, at the Pittsman County Board of Supervisors Meeting on May 17, 2022, the following resolution was presented and adopted. Whereas, the board is committed to recognizing and celebrating Pittsman County, Virginia's historical heritage and contributions made hereto by its citizens. And whereas Trooper Henry Noel Harmon was a Virginia State Trooper who was killed in the line of duty while serving the citizens of this county. And whereas Harmon was assigned to the county stationed out of Chatham, Virginia. And whereas Harmon and his family lived off Route 57 just outside Chatham. And whereas Harmon had been with the Virginia State Police seven years when he arrested a drunk driver on Route 761, one half mile south of Long Island, Virginia, on January the 10th, 1960. And whereas the arrestee shot Trooper Harmon in the back of the neck, leaving him paralyzed for life from the neck down. Whereas Trooper Harmon died 35 years later on February the 7th, 1995, at the age of 65. And whereas Harmon's son, Henry Wayne Harmon, followed in his father's footsteps, serving the county of Pittsman County and with the Hurt Police Department. And his grandson, Henry Gregory Harmon, is currently serving our county citizens as a Virginia State Trooper assigned to Area 43. Whereas the Virginia State Police have saved countless lives by protecting county and state citizens throughout rigorous law enforcement and patrolling of county and state roadways. And every day, they brave ever-present danger to assist a stranded motorist to investigate gun, drug, and human trafficking, to stop public corruption, and to bring closure to devastated families and to stop dangerous driving and dangerous individuals. And whereas Harmon was, is an example of the dedication of the Virginia State Police. And it's fitting that this board remember his sacrifice. Whereas 33-2-13, the Code of Virginia, 1950 is amended, hereby authorizes the Commonwealth Transportation Board, the CTP, to give suitable names to state highways, bridges, interchanges, and other transportation facilities and change the names of any highways and bridges, interstate, interchanges, or other transportation facilities forming a part of the systems of the state highways. And whereas the same Virginia Code section further provides that the Virginia Department of Transportation, VDOT, shall place and maintain appropriate signs indicating the names of highways, bridges, interchanges, and other transportation facilities by the CTP and requires that the cost of producing, placing, and maintaining such signs shall be paid by the localities in which they are located. Now therefore, be it hereby resolved that the board fully and enthusiastically supports the naming of the Route 57 Bridge in the Bannister District of the county of the location of said bridge depicted in more detail on the map attached heretofore and made a part fully hereof as the Trooper Henry Noel Harmon Memorial Bridge. And be it further resolved that the county agrees to pay the cost of producing, placing, and maintaining the signs, calling attention to this naming. And be it finally resolved that a copy of this resolution be forwarded to the Harmon family, appropriate local VDOT officials and the CTP for consideration, given under my hand this 17th day of May, 2022. William V. Ingram, Chairman, Pittsman County Board of Supervisors, and Clarence C. Monday, Pittsman County Clerk. Having said that, gentlemen, what about a motion to adopt this resolution? And Mr. Barx, this is in your district. Do you make that motion, sir?
I do.
Well, thank you. What about a second?
Second.
Mr. Warren, thank you. Any discussion, comments? I do have to say that I'm really, really honored that my colleagues have been so kind and gracious in making this happen because it won't be, it wouldn't be happening. And I mean that. It's very special. And which makes it even more special is that his son, who I call Buzz, is here with us and his wife and his son. But his son, that's a current-serving state trooper, believe it or not, is out working a wreck. And so he's not here. But having said that, after we vote, I'm going to have all y'all come up and all of the representatives of the state police and get us some pictures. And then if you want to leave, you can. So having said that, I have a motion, a second, if you would, gentlemen, cast your vote. And that has passed. So Buzz, if you would, Tia and your son, if you would meet us up front here. And my colleagues, y'all come on down one more time. Would anyone with the family like to speak? That's okay. That's okay. Good. Okay. Colonel and Mr. Careco, if y'all would come up and all the uniform troopers and anybody with state police, anybody would get this picture. And if you would, Colonel, let me put you on each side.
I've been losing more than that, baby.
Again, let me, let me thank y'all. This means more than you'll ever know. But there is a Virginia bill that says we don't have to pay for the signs. I just want to bring your attention that the resolution was formatted. But, you know, but again, I just want to thank y'all so much for that. Now, hearing of the citizens, we have anybody signed up?
Yes, sir, if you want to read this precept.
All right, let me read this. Each person addressing the board under hearing of the citizens shall be a resident Orlando of the county of Pittsman County or the registered agent of such resident Orlando. Each person shall step up, give his or her name and district in an audible tone of voice for the record. And unless further time is granted by the chairman, shall limit his or her address to no more than three minutes. No person shall be permitted to address the board more than once during the hearing of the citizens. Our remarks shall be addressed to the board as a body and not to any individual member thereof. Hearing of the citizens shall last for a maximum of 45 minutes. Any individual that is signed up to speak during said section who does not get the opportunity to do so because the aforementioned time limit shall be given speaking priority at the next board meeting. Absent chairman's approval, no person shall be able to speak who has not signed up. All right, Kaylin, who we have?
Elton Blackstock.
Mr. Blackstock, I would like to recognize you as an ex-member of the Board of Supervisors. Good to have you, sir. But you only have three minutes.
Thank you, Chairman Ingram.
Yes, sir.
I'll make this brief. I know from prior experience, most of y'all have probably been here since between 12 and 2 o'clock today. I remember sitting up there in the hot seat myself. I want to thank each one of y'all while I'm up here for willing to serve our county. It's a tough job and in today's political climate, it's really tough. And I want to say thank you to each one of you that are willing to serve and continue to serve our county. I'm here tonight to say thank you. I watch the meetings online and listen to them. And I listened to your meeting earlier today. And it's a special day for me because when I was on the Board of Supervisors, one of my pet projects was to get something going with Wayside Park. And with several of the members that are still on the board, we worked as a team. There's no individual that can take credit for that. I certainly don't. And we got Wayside Park going, got some funding going through the county, through the regional foundation, JT Mini-Mall, and other resources, put funding up to get that park going. Well, I heard today that you're going to fund finally the Swinging Bridge project down there, which is really the heart of the park itself. And my family, to include me and my wife and our grandchildren, have so enjoyed that park and what it's become. And it was a, I remember when Mark Moore first started talking with us about it and trying to get going. And I just think it's wonderful that you're, I know it's on the agenda tonight, that y'all, as a board, if it passes, are going to fund that, replacing the Swinging Bridge down there that's been there since the Roosevelt years. So I want to say thank you. The second reason I'm here tonight is I'm here in support of our Commissioner of Revenue, Robin Gold. Robin is a professional. She's a friend. She's also, by the way, I'm from the Stanton River District. She resides in the Stanton River District, as do most of her family, the Coleses. And they're great friends of our family. But what I want to say is there's been a lot of talk about these properties that have been found recently by the company that did the assessment that y'all have invalidated now and why they're not on the books. Well, I'll give you one of the main reasons they're not on the books. And it's, it, all of that's been on the Board of Supervisors, it lays at our feet. In this county, if you declare a building, an agricultural building, you don't have to get a permit. You don't have to do, you don't have to come to Chatham to do anything. All you do is put the structure up. Well, there's no way that the county treasurer or the Commissioner of Revenue knows that that building went up on your property. The only way that the Commissioner of Revenue would know is every four years, when the county does an assessment, if the company that we, the Board of Supervisors, y'all now, hire, catches those buildings. So the Commissioner of Revenue is not at fault for those buildings not being listed. And some of them probably may be pads or whatever. But I'm sure that a lot of buildings out there that should be, be in tax, they're not. But it's not the Commissioner of Revenue's fault. It lies at the feet of the Board of Supervisors. We've all known for years, if you're informed like you should be, we've all known for years that those buildings did not require a permit. All you had to do was say that they were agriculture building. The second thing that I would add is the if, I don't think it's any rush to be in haste as far as listing these properties. You want to go about doing it the right way. Nobody wants to lose tax money and everybody wants everybody to pay their fair share. But the Commissioner of Revenue has the authority for the year that you're in and three years back, after she determines a property is taxable, to send a bill to the citizen. Okay? So you guys are supposed to be hiring somebody else to do an assessment, I assume, now that you've decided that Bright Minds is not the company that you were going with. So let's, when those folks go out and do their searches and they come back, let's let them give the information and work with Commissioner Gold and her staff and do it the right way. And if it's determined that people have not been paying taxes on certain properties, we can go back. Commissioner, she's only been in office two years. And I'll remind you, the citizens of this county, she won every precinct in this county. A very, very popular, she's been at the Commissioner of Revenue's office for years. She's well-known. People respect Mrs. Gold. And let's give her and her team the time to work this out and do it the right way. I'm asking, I'm asking, it's the right thing to do. Put politics aside and let's do it, and let's do this thing the right way. Everybody wants to pay their fair share. And I'll, I'll save you. I may have property that's not on the tax rolls that they may dig up. Everybody's under a microscope. It might be some Elton Blackstock property down there that I'm not paying taxes on. I'm not aware of it. I got a pretty hefty tax bill. But I mean, look at your own self. I'm sure that if you, you may have a Leonard building or a 10 of 10 building out there that's, that should be, have been reported along the years and it's not. So it's going, let's not make people criminals, okay? Let's do this thing the right way, work with Mrs., the board. And if you need to change a code, change a code. It's the worst. Somebody has to report all builders, just don't charge them a fee. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Blackstock. Thank you, sir. Tell, he used to be a politician. Anyway, who else do we have, Kaylin?
Wayne Robertson.
Mr. Robertson, come forward, sir. Good to see you, Mr. Robertson. And if would, please speak directly into that mic so we can hear you.
My name, excuse me. My name is Wayne Robertson. I live in Mr. Warren's district. I want to talk to you about taxes. But first, I want to address another smaller issue. The last time I came here, you all were having a disagreement about something. And Mr. Warren, at the end, said we must all be above reproach. As you probably know, that is a Bible term related to church leaders. Of course, it applies to elected officials like you. Indeed, it applies to all of us. We all need to be careful what we say and what we do. We all must be above reproach. So, Mr. Warren, thank you for bringing that Bible principle to our attention again. Thank you very much. I want to talk with you about taxes, two taxes in particular. Senator Jesse Helms from North Carolina said, "There's nothing as certain as death in taxes, but there's no sense in being taxed to death." And I'm thinking about that proposed increase to the sales tax. Ms. Walker was here to promote the increase in the sales tax. I'm here for the exact opposite. I think we do not need an increase in the sales tax. The school board gets a big pile of money every year. They should be able to manage that money well enough to take care of the buildings and also to make everything else work. I do not hate teachers and I do not hate children. I just think they need to manage their money well and not increase the sales tax. The other tax, you've heard me talk about before. It's time to get rid of the trash tax for two reasons. One is you've collected enough money already to fix anything at the landfill that needs fixing. And the second reason is somebody told me we need the trash tax to save money for a new courthouse. The fact is, we do not need a new courthouse. What we have is perfectly adequate. Those people who work over there do a wonderful job and that's what's really important. So I'd like you to remember what Senator Helms said. "There's nothing as certain as death in taxes, but there's no sense in being taxed to death." I will vote against that increase in the sales tax and I hope everybody else will too. Also, it's time to end the trash tax. Does anybody have any questions for me about what I've said?
Thank you, Mr. Robertson.
Thank you for your attention to these matters.
Thank you, sir. Kayla, and I believe we had one more?
Anita Royston.
Ms. Royston, come on up. Good to see you. If you felt comfortable dropping the mask while you speak, that'd be great. We'll stay back and just talk in the mic. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Good evening. My name is Anita Royston. I'm the president of the Pennsylvania County branch of the NAACP. I thank you for this time to speak. I do so in support of Robin Coles-Gord, our esteemed Commissioner of the Revenue for Pennsylvania County. On at least two occasions and in this particular venue, speakers have used their voice in an attempt to malign and tear down the stellar reputation of Robin Gold's Cord, Gord, our Commissioner of the Revenue. The accusations leveled against her are baseless and totally without merit and need to be disallowed in this body immediately. Here are the facts. Robin Coles made history in this county in 2019 when she was elected the first African-American in the county's history to the position of Commissioner of the Revenue. Further, she received 60% of the vote in a convincing win. During her campaign, she received endorsements from the retiring outgoing Commissioner, Ms. Shirley Hammack, and also from retired Commissioner, Mr. Samuel W. Swanson, Jr. Ms. Hammack, in her endorsement, said, and I quote, "Robin and I have worked side by side over the past 34 years under Commissioners of the Revenue, Hunt A. Meadows III and Samuel W. Swanson. When I was elected Commissioner of the Revenue in 2015, there was no hesitation Robin would become my deputy commissioner. She has a vast knowledge regarding Virginia State Code and Pennsylvania County ordinances and by which the office must operate. The Commissioner of the Revenue is not a policymaking office, but an administrator of state and local code. This requires a person that can interpret and assess uniformly all taxable properties within the statutes. Robin possesses these qualifications, and come January 1st, I will be able to assume duties with the office with no interruption of having to learn procedures and timelines." End of quote. Retired Commissioner Samuel W. Swanson, Jr., in his endorsement of Robin Coles-Gord, said, and I quote, "Robin's experience in all aspects of the Virginia Tax Code 58-1 will keep the office on solid ground and will promote a positive environment for the citizens of Pennsylvania County. Robin will be a hands-on public servant whose doors will always be open to the taxpayers of Pennsylvania County." End of quote. It is also noteworthy that another retired Commissioner of the Revenue, Hunt Meadows, who hired Coles-Gord in 1985, said at her swearing-in ceremony, and I quote, "Pennsylvania County is very fortunate to have Robin as their next Commissioner of the Revenue. She did an outstanding job for me and in the people and the people of Pennsylvania County." End of quote. Three former Commissioners of Revenue and 60% of voters showed their strong support for Robin Coles-Gord for Commissioner in large due to her overwhelming qualifications for the job. These attacks against Robin Coles-Gord are ludicrous and are being fueled by the fact that she did not support the selection of Bright Minds, who was selected by the Board of Supervisors to conduct the 2021 property assessment effort. She believed there were two other companies who submitted a proposal for the job who were better qualified than Bright Minds. It is clear she is being singled out for petty political reasons and personally attacked for no factual reasons whatsoever. At the time Bright Minds submitted a proposal to the county in June 2020 for the reassessment, the company was effectively an incubator company with about a year and a half in existence, with its office still housed at the Dan River Business Development Center. The center provides office space, management training, and other services for small businesses just making their foray out into the business world. It is noteworthy that the first document in the body of the proposal is a letter of recommendation from the center director, who confirmed that Bright Minds had occupied office space in recent months, and the director spoke futuristically of the possibilities of Bright Minds, citing their success will be positive for our area in economic terms, one job at a time. Obviously, this was not a statement about the qualifications and suitability of this company to perform the work they were later hired to perform. Bright Minds' Pennsylvania County proposal included active proposals from three Virginia counties. These were Essex, King William, and Patrick Counties. Neither one has the amount of land area or population as Pennsylvania County. In fact, our county's population outnumbers the other three counties combined by more than 15,000 residents. Significantly, Pennsylvania County has almost the same amount of land area as Essex, King William, and Patrick Counties combined. Later, Bright Minds received the Pennsylvania County contract, and it is critical to note that of the four Virginia counties just referenced, two of the four, or 50%, King William and Pennsylvania County, invalidated Bright Minds' work and threw it out, citing numerous errors and inconsistencies. The Board of Supervisors awarded the contract for reassessment to Bright Minds. By doing so, they effectively provided startup and seed money to a company that was ill-equipped to handle the work. It defies logic, sound reasoning, and common sense that someone with over 36 years of service, working in the same department and doing exemplary work, would suddenly change this paradigm simply because she stood up for the best interests of her fellow citizens, and she was 100% right. No one should be allowed the opportunity to come onto this floor and make accusations against anyone without verifiable proof. The Board of Supervisors voted unanimously for the selection of Bright Minds, and they voted unanimously to invalidate their results. It is the board that has 100% accountability for these decisions. Last year's election results are a resounding cry for change, positive change. Many of us are pleased with the recent installed board members, Boards of Supervisors. We implore you to continue your leadership path to lead us forward for a better future. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And thank y'all for coming. Kayla, and anyone else?
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Under Public Hearings, this is rezoning public hearings pursuant to Article 5, Division 6 of the Pennsylvania County Zoning Ordinance. The Board of Supervisors has been empowered to hear and decide specific zoning issues and zoning map changes in support of said ordinance. In accomplishing this important task, the board is responsible for promoting the health, safety, and general welfare of the citizens of Pennsylvania County. The board must ensure that all of its decisions, regulations be directed to these goals and that each be consistent with the environment, the comprehensive plan, and in the best interests of Pennsylvania County, its citizens, and its prosperity. Case number one, this is R. 22-011. I'm going to open the public hearing up at 8:16. Ms. Ragsdale, good to have you.
Case R-22-01, Jane Ellis Holding Company LLC has petitioned to rezone 52.01 acres located on Mill Creek Road in the Banister Election District from R. 1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District and A. 1 Agricultural District to A. 1 Agricultural District to allow for a utility-scale solar energy facility. Once the property is rezoned to A. 1, all uses listed under Section 35-178 are permitted. On April 5th, 2022, the Planning Commission recommended, by an 8 to 0 vote with no opposition, that the petitioner's request be granted. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, a representative from Dimension Renewable Energy LLC is here to represent the petition.
Thank you, ma'am. Come on up, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board.
If you would, pull that mic up a little bit. Or there you go, sir. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Karen Seeow. I'm the Director of Development with Dimension Energy. We are a community solar developer headquartered in Atlanta. And as Emily mentioned, I'm here tonight because we are proposing to rezone a property located at 637 Mill Creek Road in the Banister District. It's currently double-zoned, R. 1 and A. 1. We are intending to rezone it to just A. 1. Once the rezoning is complete, our intent is to submit an application for special use permit for a shared solar project under the state of Virginia Shared Solar Law. I just have a brief presentation for you here tonight. Just a quick overview, happy to tell you a little bit about who we are, what we do, and then talk about what the difference is between community solar or shared solar and true utility-scale solar, since in the zoning code, they're defined under the same term, but they are very different types of projects. And then I'll provide a brief project overview, and I'm happy to answer any questions the board or public may have. So this first slide, I won't spend too much time here. This is just an overview of who Dimension is. As I mentioned, we're headquartered in Atlanta. We solely develop shared solar or community solar projects. We do no development of traditional utility-scale projects. We come from a deep bench of talent developing these types of projects, and we're a full-term key developer, which means from day one, where we're citing a project on a piece of land, to the last day of construction, when the last panel is put on the racking equipment, and through operation, we are your point of contact as the developer of the project. Often the case is that one company will develop the project to a certain point and then sell it to somebody else, but we will own the project full-term. So when I'm at meetings like these, the first question I always get is, "What is community solar or shared solar? How is it different than other projects that we've seen to date?" I know this county has seen a number of solar projects presented over the past year, so I'm happy to provide that information. And so the genesis of shared solar starts with the Shared Solar Law, which was a piece of legislation that was passed by the state in 2020 and essentially created a new asset class of solar project, shared solar, where each project is defined by being no larger than 5 megawatts AC. That's around 25 acres of land. And in total, for the entire state, for this program, there'll be no more than 200 acres, I'm sorry, 200 megawatts total. And further, what it does is it allows essentially a marketplace to be created where Dominion customer residents can subscribe to receive a share of the power produced by the system to receive a savings on their monthly Dominion energy bill. The way I like to describe this is to compare it to rooftop residential solar, because that's something that people have seen on their neighbors' roofs or are more familiar with. And so when you look at a system like that, it's very unlikely that the resident purchased those panels outright. More likely what they did is they entered into an agreement with a solar company, where that company installed their panels on that resident's roof, and they're selling that power back to the resident. And it avoids the electricity costs they would pay from Dominion and saves money on their monthly electric bill. The way I like to describe community solar is if you picture an entire neighborhood where every roof has solar panels on the roof, and you just take them off the roof and you aggregate them into one centralized system, that is essentially what a community solar project is. While electrically, it's connected to the grid, and you know, those specific electrons may not reach that individual's helm, commercially, it's the same, where they enter into an agreement with our company to receive a share of the credit for the power produced each month, and that results in savings on their Dominion electric bill. So we think this is a great benefit. It allows us to reach many more people than would be able to receive the benefit from traditional rooftop solar. Many examples of someone who would not be able to get residential rooftop solar might be if your roof is facing the wrong direction and, you know, it doesn't get enough sun or you have a big tree in your front yard. And a big piece here is that for those traditional rooftop solar projects, typically those residential solar companies require the customers have a minimum credit score because they are putting their equipment on your roof. And we think that's, that's not right, because it prohibits, you know, those residents who might, you know, be most in need of this benefit from actually receiving it. So under community solar, the shared solar program, there is no minimum credit score. Anybody can subscribe as long as they're a Dominion customer. And this is something that Dimension views as a great asset and something that we are prioritizing in, you know, our view of these types of projects. You know, in these meetings, the next question I typically get, particularly for the county, is, "Do we have Dominion customers?" And the answer is yes. I know there are also a lot of cooperative customers, but Dominion has a substantial amount of customers within the county. This map shows the electric districts, and that blue polygon in the middle represents Dominion's territory. Within Pennsylvania County, there are around 26,000 households, and of those, around 5,000 are Dominion customers, which represents roughly 20%. Kind of runs along that Route 29 corridor. And their territory touches almost every single electric district within the county. So we think this is a great opportunity to create benefit for lots of county residents to save money on their electric bill. Again, this is just a highlight of how this project is different from many of the other projects this board may have seen. Particularly for utility-scale projects, they are much larger in size both with regard to capacity and land acreage. I know several of the projects this board has seen are, you know, in the 10s or 20s of megawatts. I believe one was recently over 100 megawatts of capacity. And with that becomes a big footprint of land, hundreds, thousands of acres. As I mentioned, community solar projects are limited to 5 megawatts AC in size, which is around 25 acres of land. The project will ultimately be considering is even a little bit smaller than that. And that allows us to be very careful in the way we select our sites and design them to make sure that they make sense to the community, are complying with zoning codes, and properly designed and screened from view. And then finally, as I mentioned, offtake, whereas a large utility-scale customers are either directly selling their power to Dominion Energy or maybe large commercial customers like a data center, this shared solar program, the offtake is directly individual residential customers. So we think this is a great opportunity to provide a great benefit to those who need it most. And then this brings us to the project we're proposing today. As Emily mentioned, it's located at 637 Mill Creek Road in the Banister District. The entire parcel is around 52 acres of land, and that's what we are seeking to rezone the entire parcel. But of that, we'd be using a fairly limited amount of land. We'll have around 14 acres under panel. The system we're proposing is around 3.8 megawatts AC. It's stationary, which means it doesn't move during the day. It's relatively low to the ground. And there are many things we like about this parcel in particular. Specifically, we like this kind of elongated shape, which has us far off Mill Creek Road to the south. It allows us to be set far back from neighboring properties. It's in a relatively low-density residential area where we have few residential neighbors surrounding the property. And there's a substantial amount of vegetation already surrounding the project site, which we will then supplement with new additional screening to be compliant with the zoning code. In our first handful of pre-op meetings with the county, we had lots of conversations. Mr. Barshel, I know you were in a number of those meetings, about what we would need to see in moving forward these projects. And one thing I heard was community support. So in planning these meetings to get us up to this point for rezoning, we had a number of community meetings, informational meetings, both on Zoom and in person, where we met with the neighbors, we answered their questions. And I'm excited to tell you all there was a lot of support for the project. You know, we met with lots of residents to answer questions about the project. In one of those meetings, Ms. Royce, I didn't realize you'd be in the audience today, but we discussed the project. And after that meeting, our company presented at a Zoom meeting for the county chapter of the NAACP's Executive Committee. We were able to answer a lot of questions that they had. I am proud to say that this board has received letters of report from neighbors like Willie Fitzgerald, letters of support from Ms. Royce on behalf of the NAACP. So we're very excited about this project. And then most recently, we had a sidewalk with county staff and a number of neighbors where we were able to answer additional questions about the project. So in summary, we think this is a great project that creates a lot of benefit, that's located on a parcel that has all the characteristics, all the bones we would need for a good solar project, will be adequately screened from view, where there'll be lots of existing and proposed vegetation. And then beyond that, will provide economic benefits to the county. As we mentioned, abilities for residents to subscribe to save money on their electric bill. And then beyond that, monetary contributions directly to the county. Now, I know this board's familiar with siting agreements for the large utility-scale projects. Those siting agreements are limited to projects that are over 5 megawatts AC, so a shared solar project is not able to enter into them. But one thing we can do is offer a condition of public improvement funding, where we could similarly make a contribution to the county, and that funding can then be used for improvements in the community. We looked at recent siting agreements, and we've confirmed that we can match those larger project siting agreements on a dollar-per-megawatt basis, which would result in about a quarter million dollars of benefits to the county over the lifetime of the system. And I think it's important to mention that... And I think it's important to mention that these are revenues that would be provided to the county with no strain on county services. I know the county is familiar with how solar projects operate. Once they're in the ground, no traffic, no water, no trash. They sit quietly, and the county receives revenue, and the residents receive a benefit. So we think this is a great project, on a site that makes sense, that creates a lot of advantages for the community. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Any questions, gentlemen?
Yes, sir.
All righty. Thank you, sir. Anyone else sign up to speak?
No, sir.
Okay, I now close that hearing at 8:27 PM. This would be Mr. Dalton. You're going to read that motion, sir.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. In case R-22-011, I make a motion to approve the rezoning of 52.01 acres from residential, R1 residential suburban subdivision and A1 agriculture district to A1 agriculture district to allow for a utility-scale solar energy facility. The rezoning should be consistent with the county comprehensive plan.
Thank you, sir. What about a second? Mr. Barstall, thank you, sir. Any discussion? Not. Cast your vote. All right, thank you. That property has been rezoned. Open up case number R-22-012. I believe this again is you, Ms. Raxdale. And I open the public hearing at 8:28 PM.
Case R-22-012, Martha Adams has petitioned to rezone 0.568 acres located on Route 40 East Gretna Road in the Banister Election District from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to M1 Industrial District Light Industry to allow for property lines to be adjusted. Once the property is rezoned to M1, all uses listed under Section 35-383 are permitted. On April 5th, 2022, the Planning Commission recommended, by an eight-to-zero vote with no opposition, that the petitioner's request be granted. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman David Adams is here to represent the petition.
Thank you. Ms. Adams, come forward, please. Good evening.
Good evening.
Yes, sir.
Well, it's just a small spur of land on the other side of our property that ended up being kind of an isolated spot between two properties. And so my mother is purchasing that land to readjust the property line so that things straighten up. And in order to register that, it just needs to be rezoned to match.
Okay, sir. Thank you. Anyone else sign to speak?
No, sir.
All right, thank you. I now close that public hearing at 8:30 PM. And if you would, Mr. Barstall, would you read the motion?
You want Mr. Barstall, Mr. Dalton, me?
I'm sorry, Mr. Dalton.
Who do you want to do it? Okay?
Yeah, sorry about that.
You're good.
All right, Mr. Dalton.
Is that case R-22-012?
No, 012.
12, yes, sir. Yeah, mine's not coming up.
It's okay, I'll read.
You may take care of it.
I make a recommendation we approve. Staff recommends approval of case R-22-012, submitted by Martha Adams, requesting a rezoning, a total of .56 acres located on Route 40-824 East Gretna Road in the Banister District, shown on the tax map as part of GPIN number 2530-33-6359 to allow for property lines to be adjusted. The subject property is adjacent to property currently zoned M1 Industrial District Light Industry, and this is in keeping with the comprehensive plan.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Mr. Barstall, you want to say it now? Yep, say it. Good. Okay. Any discussion? Not. Cast your vote. And Ms. Adams, that property has been rezoned. Thank you for coming. All right, Ms. Barstall, this is case R-22-14. If you would, I open the public hearing at 8:32 PM.
Case R-22-014, Joshua and Amy Jennings have petitioned to rezone 9.83 acres located on US Highway 58, Martinsville Highway in the Tunstall Election District from RC1 Residential Combined Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District to allow for an indoor gun range. Once the property is rezoned to A1, all uses listed under Section 35-178 are permitted. On April 5th, 2022, the Planning Commission recommended, by an eight-to-zero vote with no opposition, that the petitioner's request be granted. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman Joshua Jennings is here to represent the petition.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Jennings, come forward, please. Good to see you, sir.
Chairman, Board. Basically, just asking for rezoning so that I can further grow my business that's located in Mr. Ingram's district. I'm also a resident of Mr. Warren's district. If you've got any questions, I'd be happy to cover them. Just want to grow and hopefully bring some jobs to the area.
That's good. Thank you, Josh. Anybody have any questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else sign up to speak? All right, I'll close that public hearing at 8:33 PM. And having said that, I will read a motion in case R-22-014. I make a motion to approve the rezoning of a total of 9.83 acres from RC1 Residential Combined Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District to allow for an indoor gun range. The rezoning should be consistent with the county's comprehensive plan. That is my motion.
Second that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Any comments, gentlemen, questions?
I just have one.
Yes, sir.
It's always good to see a local person wanting to expand his business. And what you're doing here, I hear a lot. It's a big demand for it. When you get it ready, I'll join first. My son will join second, and our wives will join also.
No, you, two, three, and four. But anyway, I think this would be the first indoor gun range in the county, if I'm not mistaken. That's pretty cool.
Good precedent.
Anyway, thank y'all so much for doing that. And it looks like your property's been rezoned. Thank y'all so much for coming. Okay? Anything else on that? Caitlin?
No, sir.
Okay. Other public hearings. Each person addressing the board under a public hearing shall step up, give his or her name and district and/or his or her place of residency for non-county residents in an audible tone of voice for the record, unless further time is granted by the chairman. Shall limit his/her address to three minutes. Speakers for a group shall be limited to 10 minutes. Speakers shall conclude their remarks at that time unless a consent of the board is affirmatively given to extend the speaker's allotted time. Absent chairman's approval, no person shall be speak who has not signed up. And ironically, Jay, you're up, buddy. You ready to go home, aren't you?
That's right.
Yes, sir. Thank you for coming, Jay.
Thank y'all. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jay Craddock with the Virginia Department of Transportation. Section 33.2-331 of the Code of Virginia, as amended, requires that the county board supervisors, in conjunction with the Department of Transportation, formulate a six-year secondary road improvement plan priority list. This is done on a yearly basis. Tonight's public hearing is being conducted for the fiscal years 2023 through 2028. The purpose of this public hearing is to receive public comments on the proposed secondary six-year plan for fiscal years 2023 through 2028 in Pennsylvania County. Let me point out that the six-year plan is not a construction plan, but rather an allocation plan. In other words, over the next six years, this plan allocates money to the projects listed towards the construction of those roads. And I'll now read the priorities from the plan, the draft plan. Basically, over the next six years, we've been allocated $5,42,216 to be dedicated to paving of unpaved roads. And I have the priority list. I'll read the roads. These first roads I'm going to read are the ones that are already on the plan. We've got Cox's Store Road, Cherrystone Lake Road, Friendly Drive, Hubbard Road, Oliver's Lane, and Mill Road. And those are all scheduled to be paved this construction season. Then in calendar year 2023, we've got Oxford Road, Pocket Road, Victoria Road, and Valley Road. And then in calendar year 2024, we've got Magnolia Road, Tomahawk Mill Road, and Dalton's Farm Lane. And in calendar year 2025, we've got Owens Mill Road, Hawkins Road, Joe Carter Road, Tucker Road, and Almond Road. Calendar year 2026, we've got Chestnut Lane, Hollybill Drive, Ponderosa Road, Herman Farmer Road, and Eddie's Lane. And then the roads we're proposing to add to the plan for calendar year 2027 would be Jasmine Road, Dabney House Road, Farmers Road, and Mockingbird Road. So we'd be adding about 8.3 miles to the current plan. So over the next six years, it's a total of 33.7 miles that we would be paving that are currently unpaved. So at this time, we solicit comments from the public concerning this priority list.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing at 8:38 PM. Anyone sign up to speak?
No, sir.
I'll close it at 8:38 PM. Jay is with VDOT, for those of you that don't know. And you do us a great service, Jay, and we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we have a vote to accept?
We need to make a motion on this.
Yeah. Do I have a motion?
Don't we have a motion?
I'll make that motion. I'll make a motion to approve the proposed VDOT secondary six-year plan as presented and authorized the county administrators to sign any related necessary documentation.
Thank you, Ms. Dudley. What about a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Ms. Dalton. Any questions, discussion? All right, gentlemen, cast your vote. Jay, thanks again.
Thank y'all.
You may go home. Do we have any unfinished business? Okay. Under new business. This would be item C, I believe. Correct?
With the revisions to the agenda, it's item A, but this is the appointment for the DSS Board for the Westover District.
Okay. So... This is for the, this motion is for the board's review and consideration. So where are we at on that?
I guess I'd like to make a motion to appoint Jim Scares as the Westover District appointee to the DSS Board.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion?
I'd just like to say, on his behalf, he served in the US Air Force for eight years, and they did a lot of community support. He's also been very active with God's Pit Crew over the last probably 15 years or so, going all over building houses and refurbishing churches, rebuilding churches wherever a disaster's been. He's also been a huge part of their fundraising. And he's also been active in the Boys and Girls Club as well. And I hate to try to find someone at the last minute. Patricia Evans has decided to step down, and unfortunately, she's done a great job for the last four years. And I guess there was some consideration about him being my brother. I guess it's not a, setting a precedent to appoint a member of your family. I think my predecessor on this board, Koi Harville, appointed his wife to the DSS Board. In fact, she was the one that hired our previous director, not Chris Payne, but the one before. And she also helped get that plaque on the annex for Arlene Creasy. So this is certainly not setting a new precedent. And the main thing is, my brother's one of the few people that I know that cares about this county enough to worry about accountability and transparency for the leadership of this county. So as far as I'm concerned, he's fully qualified and will be an active member and try to do the right thing for the people who need the support the least or have the, need the support the most of our county citizens who really depend on the DSS services. And I know he'll be a big advocate for them. Thank you.
Ms. Dean?
I'm going to vote no, and I'm going to try to make this as factual as possible. Mr. Scares has come before this board for four months in a row. He's attacked this board. He's attacked me personally. He's attacked other board members, which is totally against the decorum of this board, our rules and regulations. He has had outbursts on two separate occasions. With the second occasion, I had to have him removed because of disrupting our meeting. He is Mr. Scares's brother. He is very confrontational. He's attacked me personally in public twice, one of which was at God's Pit Crew banquet of all places with my wife. So having said that, just last month, I went on this board. And so with Jim Scares coming on this board, realizing that he just really don't like me and I'm not on his Christmas card list, I do not see this as a productive move. And like I said, Mr. Scares himself spoke out against nepotism at one time and made mention of at least two supervisors that had put family members on boards. And we collectively agree that was wrong. And so I'm a bit surprised, but he said this was a last-minute deal. He couldn't find anybody. But I'm not going to support this. So that's my comments.
Ms. Dean?
Yes, sir. Mr. Warren?
As a representative for Chatham Blair's District, I'm going to be consistent, as I have for the last six and a half years. There's never been a time on a district appointment that I voted against that supervisor appointee because I felt like the citizens of that district elected him to represent them and to make those appointments. So I'm going to remain consistent and support Mr. Scares's recommendation. Just want to be clear on my thought of that. I don't want to disrespect the citizens that, as was mentioned tonight, 60%, but I think yours was 66% or 67% during the election.
69.
69%. So I don't want to discredit the 69% of the people in the Westover District by saying they elected the wrong person.
Well, I need to add, and I'm sorry I failed to mention this. Last time Mr. Scares came before this board, he publicly said that he was involved in a petition to have our duly-elected commissioner revenue removed from office by making false accusations against her. And I think it is just so counterproductive to put a member on a citizens' board that's the brother of another member that is actively trying to have a duly-elected constitutional officer removed from office. And I'm sorry as I can be. I understand consistency, but that's just simply wrong.
Well, since you've opened the door here, Mr. Ingram, that is an appropriate action of a civilian citizen of this county if they feel something's not going wrong. It's a shame that we have to go up to the Virginia Department of Taxation to get somebody to do their job. We finally have come to an agreement with the issues of Mr. Scares brought up today that will be announced next week, which is thankfully is a good thing looking out for the county citizens. I seriously doubt we would have got the cooperation from you had we not had the pressure put on you to do the right thing. So all I care about right now is accountability and transparency, which seems to be missing, especially since January 4th. And I appreciate, if you don't want to put my brother on, I'm going to find someone just as apparent with the accountability and transparency, keep an eye on you while you're serving on the DSS Board. You can vote them down as well. But I'm going to make sure somebody's watching you. I wish you would hold yourself to the same standards that you want to hold everybody else. You've come to two public meetings and disparaged our county administrator, David Smitherman, and lied about his, what he had had in store for the Fire and Rescue Commission. Tonight, we just approved ARPA money. A million dollars' worth of money was approved, and that was initiated by David Smitherman. That was in a detriment to the fire and rescue people, like you say. So that was two times you came to that Fire and Rescue Commission and lied, flat-out lied about what David Smitherman was doing to the fire and rescue people. You've also disparaged the whole DSS Board in this meeting and on Facebook. That was one reason Patricia Evans did not want to serve. She took your advice and decided to step down because she didn't feel she could work with you. My brother is willing to work with you. But that's up to you. Apparently, you don't want to do that, and that's fine. But it won't stop him from coming to these meetings. I thought we were going to be come by eye today after the things you've said earlier tonight, and apparently that's not the case, so be it. tonight, and apparently, that's not the case, so be it.
So are you going to withdraw your brother's nomination?
No.
No, okay. So you said you were putting him on the board to watch me, right?
Of course, because he needs somebody to watch him.
All right. Well, having said that, you know, there's times that I don't need to say anything else, and I think you just said it all. So you just continue on.
I wish you would stop saying a whole lot, but that's beside the point. You can't help yourself, I know.
Nor can you, sir. And if you could ever let go of David Smitherman, we would all collectively be a whole lot better off because...
I just don't like people lying. I hate a liar is the period here, Mr. Chairman. I hate a liar.
Listen, I hate a liar too, Mr. Scares, and you've told your fair share. So before we get too off the off track, let me just say that the majority of this board, the duly-elected majority, voted to release Mr. Smitherman of his duties, which this board had the right to do. And we could have went into closed session and spent hours talking about it, but you know as well as I know, we would have had to have come out in public and cast a vote, which we did. So this nonsense about we embarrassed David, that's, just let it go, and let's move on to something else.
When you get people that will continue to lie about somebody for two years, which you obviously laid the groundwork for, one of the reasons we had to censor you back in October was all the stuff that you were playing.
Censor meant nothing. It was packed full of lies. Please grow up and get over it.
Packed full of lies. I've got the evidence if the media wants to see it.
Mr. Scares?
Mr. Chairman, we've got a, we've got a motion, we've got a second, we've had discussion.
Let's just move on with the vote. How about that?
I see enough is enough. Let's move on. We are waiting on... All right, seven votes have been cast. Motion carries. Yes, okay. It did show up. All right, moving on. This is a appointment...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to clarify on this appointment. It states that it's for the Tunstall District, but this is for the Dan River District, just for the record.
Oh, yeah, I spotted that earlier. It wasn't changed here.
That's okay.
Okay. All right, this will be Mr. Chesser's appointment and Nancy Eames. Mr. Chesser, you want to say anything about Nancy?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Do we need a motion to...
Yes, sir.
All right.
I'll make a motion.
All right, I'll second. Thank you, sir. Any discussion on that?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I will say I also will be supporting this motion for the same reason I echoed before, but also having served one year with her on that board when I was representing the Board of Supervisors several years ago. She did an outstanding job, very well-qualified. She's a good addition to the board, good appointee.
Okay, any further discussion?
I think Tim Gordon voted.
Got a second?
I think Jesse hit it.
I'll second.
I got it. You got it, Bob. I think it's going to be 7-0. I don't care who says it first.
Yes, it is. That's what's showing up over here.
There we go.
Okay, matters from the work session. We got a bunch of them.
Whoa, 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 we had one addition.
Yeah, we have the fire and rescue agreement that should be next under new business.
We moved to new business from the agenda.
I don't have it here, but y'all roll on.
From a consent agenda.
Okay.
It was, if you look at your agenda, it was, on the consent agenda, it was item K. And it was the FY23 Fire and EMS Department Service Memorandum of Agreement. And just a couple of items I think we probably should have our attorney clean up or, and probably go back to the, maybe even go back to the commission for them to add their input and wording on it. If you look at B, the County Volunteer Agency Obligations, Agencies Obligations, item two says the county should maintain accident and sickness insurance coverage on the volunteer agency members. That's a standard thing. We should be doing that. But I would like to see the commission look at putting some wordage into this agreement that addresses the fact that if we have a volunteer, just like we do with our paid services, that are out of work because of, you know, they can't run calls and all that because of an accident or sickness, that they probably should have to bring in a release from that physician and let the captain turn it in to the head of the Fire and Rescue.
Ms. Slim, could you come up, please?
Mr. Slim's old job, so that we protect the county from any liability of someone possibly going out on calls that is not released from the physician, because we don't want that exposure. So I'd just like to, you as our representative, if you would carry that back and try to get something added to that. The other thing, Mr. Ingram, was on the item, which would be page 45 on your sheet, it's item B, it's addressing the 70% threshold. I'm certainly in favor with what the commission came up with, with if a hypothetically a fire station is running 100%, but the EMS is running 60, that we ought to pay them 50%. Anyway, even though they dropped below the 70%, I don't have a problem with any of that. I'm just saying it seems like it would be reasonable to me that we ought to put some kind of threshold in there, if it's 30% or whatever, that that other entity has to run a certain percentage, so we don't have any situations down the road where an agency actually is only running about 5% of their calls, but they're not knocking it out because they're getting 50% of the money that's allocated. That doesn't make, that's just not good business judgment when one maybe ought to go out of service so that we don't have delays of that second call responded. Does that make sense what I'm saying, Mr. Ingram?
It does. Ms. Slim, could you add to that?
I'm thinking about it here.
Let me say this. Is this something we need to go back, back up and take a look at and then clean it up and then bring it back next month?
We can, yes, sir. That'd be easy to do.
And it won't affect any of our volunteers?
No, sir. Not right.
No, we don't want to negatively impact them. I'm not saying that. I'm just saying clean it up.
And that's not a change. That's been there. The change is how we credit the call. That's the only change in that line. But I understand where you're coming from, and that's...
Yeah, but we're going to pay them part of the money if they're below 70%. And it ought to be some kind of bottom that you don't just keep your EMS, because we've had some that have fire and EMS that the EMS just got down to nearly nil.
That is correct.
And we shouldn't be giving them money just so they stay in business kind of when they only in there because they're getting that little stipend. I mean, we obviously want them to be there, but I don't want, I don't want them to make the first call to go out to them knowing that they may be running 10% of their calls when they could have the second due could be Tunstall, and I know that Tunstall's going to go immediately would be my kind of reference point. We've had that in that area up there happen before. And I, you know, if I'm a victim, I don't want to worry about going through the agency that's running 10% of the calls on the first day. I want you to go ahead and call Troy so he'll come on.
And one of the things, and I'll tell you where this came from, we had agencies that, and that's a good example right there, where we had, they weren't meeting like 50% of the EMS calls, but on the fireside, they were running 100%.
Right, right.
And I just couldn't penalize, you know, there's at least one thing they're doing very, very well, and so that's why we put that in, so they could at least get something for doing that at that 70, you know, that's that 15%.
Well, I really, from my opinion, they ought to have, I mean, their money's broken out to fire and EMS. If you're running 100% of your fire, you ought to get all your money. If you're running less than 70% on EMS, maybe some adjustment needs to be made, but I don't want to penalize them. I just want to clean it up so we don't have any of those little things. And lastly, Mr. Ingram, down on page 45, it is mutually understood and agreed by in between the parties that, if you look at number two on that, okay, well, number two, it should not reference any individuals' names. It should be that the principal contracts for this MOA are Pennsylvania County Administrator Care of Pennsylvania County Public Safety Coordinator. It should not have individuals' names on there. We've got one in here that's not even employed anymore. So we need to clean all that up.
And I caught that, and I have fixed that, but I see what you're saying, make that more generic.
Yeah, because, you know, right now, we have Mr. Monday this interim. If we stick his name in here, then we got to go back and change it back. If we just make it generic, it's cleaner for everybody.
I get what you're saying. We can generalize.
Jay Vaden?
So we'll just table this until next month? Is that the easiest thing?
We'll just make a motion to send it back to staff to clean it up and for the association to look at it, or the commission to look at it again, and we'll put it on your June meeting.
I make a motion that we table this until the June meeting and that it be cleaned up based on the conversations we've had here tonight and sent to the Fire Commission for their blessing.
Second. All right, any further discussion? If not, cast your vote.
You've got to hit it while you can.
Okay, that has passed, 7-0. Now we're down to 13-8, I hope. All right, Wayside Park Funding. Who has that?
I do.
Ms. Dudley?
I've got that. That is actually in my district, and this is some information that Mr. Blackstock, who's present, he came and spoke about the Wayside Park project. So with this, I make a motion to award the contract to Concrete Foundations Incorporated and authorize county staff to transfer sufficient funds from the county's buildings and ground improvement line item to the Wayside Park project. And that's my motion.
Thank you. What about a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Dalton, thank you. Any discussion, gentlemen? Not cast your vote.
Okay, that has passed. We're down to 13B. This is a reassessment RFP approval. So who has?
I have, I've got that, Mr. Ingram.
Yes, sir.
And thank you, sir. This was spoken about earlier also in the meeting, and this is a motion I'll be making. I make a motion to award the reassessment contract to Pearson Appraisal Services and for staff to coordinate with the Commissioner of Revenue and Pearson Appraisal Services to prioritize the review and valuation of potential 4,800 newly-discovered structures in anticipation of said structures being added to the tax roll by January 1, 2023. And that is my motion.
Thank you, sir. What about a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Dalton, thank you, sir.
Any discussion? I think our commissioner's here, and she wanted to speak. I think this would be a good time to let her come up and speak if you would. Ms. Coles-Gord, thank you for coming tonight. Sorry it took so long to get to you.
That's okay. Good evening.
Good evening, Robyn.
My name is Robyn Coles-Gord. I am the Commissioner of Revenue. For the past three years, it has been my privilege to serve the citizens of Pennsylvania County. During this period, I trust that I have treated every citizen fairly, equitably, and with dignity and respect. In the past several months, it has come to light that the appraisal company Bright Minds that was hired by the previous Board of Supervisors against my professional opinion failed to accurately complete the reassessment. The current Board of Supervisors has since invalidated the work of Bright Minds. In doing so, this makes all work that Bright Minds completed invalid. Not some of it, but all of it, including the 4,853 structures that Ron Scares, his brother, Jim Scares, are consistently bringing up during board meetings. Since this invalidation, I have been publicly accused of failing to perform my duties as Commissioner of Revenue by Jim Scares. As Commissioner of Revenue, I am the assessing officer. The Board of Supervisor hires a third party to assess the real estate properties throughout the county. It is my responsibility to maintain these records for tax purposes. In my defense, my staff and I are reviewing, as time allows, these 4,853 structures in question. In reviewing this report, we found Ron Scares's property to be listed with structures that Bright Minds said were in the county but not on our tax roll. With the hiring of a new reassessment firm, let me assure this board and every citizen of this county that if any structures on that report is found to be a valid taxable property, it will be assessed accordingly as the Code of Virginia allows, which is three prior years plus the current taxable year. With the hiring of a new reassessment firm that has over 30 years of experience, I have complete confidence in this firm and believe that they will do a mass appraisal for all properties, and they will assess them equitably. In my closing, I would like to pose a question to the board that has been asked to me. Why hasn't the county filed a claim of errors and omissions with Bright Minds Insurance Company and tried to recoup some, if not all, monies that were paid to do a reassessment that has since been invalidated? Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for my time. I appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Robyn speaking.
Any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Coles-Gord?
I have a comment, a quick comment. I've been living in this county since I retired from the military since 2005. The only change I've made to my property since 2005 is I think I added a hot tub and a chicken coop that's on skids, neither of which would be taxable. Not that I'm trying to say I don't want to pay my taxes. What I'm saying is Wingate, the company that you suggested we use last year or for our latest reassessment, had missed any of these supposed new structures on my property for, what, 12 years? And when we went back and did a snapshot of 3,200 parcels, we took 40 of those and looked at those parcels for the new structures, there were 15 structures that we found that were missed by Wingate in their last reassessment of 2018. So our options weren't the best when we picked Bright Minds. We had hoped that someone with that, their capability of drone work would be able to help us out. We have probably what, how much is that database that we have of pictures of every one of these structures? So it would not have been a hard issue to go out and validate these properties. And I've sent a letter that I'm going to release to Rodrick. He's the Director of Property Taxes up at the Virginia Department of Taxation. Maybe if I post it and make it public, they'll actually answer, because some of the important questions I had, who's responsible for taking those validated properties and getting them added to the property rolls? Second is, how much of this is something that they can help us out with that wouldn't have cost the county a cent of money if they came in and helped us out with this? So as far as I'm concerned, I'm going to stand up for the accountability and transparency for this county every time I have the opportunity. If it means I pay higher taxes, I have no problem with that. In fact, I was happy with my reassessment from Bright Minds. My property value went up almost 30%, and I hadn't touched it in 15 years. So I love that idea that my property could overnight go up 30%. Well, that's beside the point. We're going to get there, and I'm going to make this stuff public. Luckily, we have an agreement that's going to be, that was announced, that we're going to work this out and get a lot of these properties done first by the new reassessment company. And that's all I cared about was making it fair for every county citizen that pays taxes. It's not fair to have some people that have had structures on their properties for over 15 years that haven't been accounted for because we didn't use the right reassessment company. Maybe this time we'll get it right. I hope so. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Scares, in response to your remarks, I would just like to say that I personally called you out because you have been talking about these structures since the work has been invalidated, and your name is on that list. So as I stated earlier, you know, as a taxpayer, you have a responsibility, and you are a board member also, so you have a responsibility to make sure that everything you own is taxed. by Pennsylvania County. You know, so you know what's on your property. So if it was missed, you could have called our office and said, you know, I have some structures on my property that has been missed that needs to be picked up. You told me earlier they'd been there for twelve years. Well, that's twelve years of taxes. Excuse me, I didn't interrupt you, so I'd like the same courtesy. Thank you. You said that they'd been there for twelve years and you've been saying that you want everybody in the county to pay their fair share of taxes. So that includes you, me, and everybody else in this room.
And what did I say? I have no problem with paying my fair share and I want everybody to pay their fair share. We've got a commercial property that's got thirty new structures that were found. We still don't know exactly where that property is.
Those are not new structures. They were there and they were taken off.
And then we have another one that I heard had seven new structures.
And they're gonna be put back on.
And I'm looking at the commercial properties where we're actually gonna get some tax revenues out of it. I'm sure my little shed's not gonna get us a whole lot of tax revenues, but that's not my point.
But it's still on there. It doesn't matter whether it's a shed or it's thirty properties that you say were missed.
Hey, what do you say?
Equitable is equitable.
What do you say we take this conversation up at a later date? Mr. Warren, you, you have a question?
Yeah, I, I just want to point out to the, to the citizens, we had, we had a really good meeting earlier coming to this conclusion of this new vendor to do it. And as part of that, as was mentioned in the resolution, so I'm not sharing any secrets, they're gonna work to, to address those forty-eight-hundred-and-fifty-three. We certainly don't think it's legitimately forty-eight-hundred-and-fifty-three. But one of the reasons to kind of fall back and answer Mr. Blackstock's question, if we can get those done, and they've indicated they certainly can get that done before the end of November, and Robin's indicated that, I'm sorry, Ms. Gordon, Commissioner, can get, can get them on the tax roll for twenty-twenty-three, that really gives us an extra year because she can go back three years prior to that if they've been on that long versus waiting till January of twenty-twenty-four. So what we're trying to do with working in conjunction with them and the Commissioner of Revenue is be fair to everyone out here that's paying their fair share to make sure everybody's paying their fair share. So, you know, the rest of us that are paying aren't covering the budget that should be supplemented by, you know, if the number happens to be twelve hundred, that's legitimate out of the forty-eight-fifty-three, so be it. But, but we want everybody to be treated fairly. And Mr. Blackstock brought up the point about calling it farm, and, and we all know that people built right after the assessment and rode that ride for at least four years for as long as I've been a citizen of Pennsylvania County. So all of that being said, we're trying to work through this with the new carrier, the new vendor, and the Commissioner of Revenue to get us to the point where it's fair and equitable to all of the citizens, those that maybe have some exposures from the forty-eight-fifty-three down to the other forty-six thousand parcels we got. Fair assessment. We're trying to, we're trying to make it work all out so it's beneficial to everyone.
That is correct. And as I said, you know, the county hires a third party to do these, do these assessments. And as Commissioner, my responsibility is to maintain the records. I do not go out and personally assess real estate. Some commissioners do that in-house. Pennsylvania County does not. You hire a third party to do that.
I, I think the good thing moving forward is that we will probably start doing this in-house. At least that would be my vote. And, and I do want to remind the citizens that we collectively as a board voted seven oh to hire Bright Minds.
Yes, you did.
And we made a terrible mistake. We voted seven oh to invalidate what they did, which was part of what Mr. Scares keeps bringing up.
Exactly.
So in all fairness to the citizens, including him, to me, I, I thought we had a plan worked out to address this.
And I agree. And I'm just speaking, because like I said, I think it's unfair that I've been singled out.
I agree.
To say that all of this is my responsibility and my fault that reassessment did not succeed.
And that's why I just said what I did because we're to blame. And, and I'm sorry, you should not.
And I appreciate that.
And you should not be blamed for this. We owe the, we owe the citizens transparency, we owe them an honest answer, and we made a mistake based on the information given at the time, and it is what it is. But we collectively came together tonight to, to fix it.
Right.
And not to attack you.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
And thank you for what you do.
We all want to say, but just not make a personal matter of the fact. That's all.
You can't, you can't let them, you can't let them talk here, Mr. Chairman. Come on, disruptions. Anyway, I need one more vote. Mr. Dalton, I think we're waiting on you.
We've got a motion and a second.
Got a motion, second?
Yes, sir.
And that does carry seven oh.
Seven oh. Thank you, Robin.
Uh, this is item thirteen C. It's not coming up on the screen, Caleb, but I'd like to make a motion to approve the Revisited Commonwealth Home Healthcare Local Performance Agreement.
Second.
That is my motion. Thank you, Mr. Warren. Any discussion on that?
Third, if we can get out of here. Jesse got the motion.
Hold on just a second.
All right, cast your vote.
And that has passed seven zero. Thank you. We're down to thirteen D. Project Doswell.
I have that.
You have that? Yes, sir, you go right ahead.
Project Doswell, I make a motion to approve the Project Doswell Moral Obligation and Resolution Number Twenty-Twenty-Two dash oh-five-oh-seven.
Thank you, Mr. Cheshire. What about a second?
Second.
Second. I think Mr. Barxdale, Beecher, Mr. Warren.
That's good.
That's cool. Let's get it.
Any discussion on that? All right, gentlemen, cast your vote.
I'll go ahead and do it.
Please.
All right, there's mine. We should be seven oh now.
Okay, that is passed. That brings us down to item thirteen E, County Administrative Search.
I have got that motion with me, Mr. Chairman, and we did discuss this. And this motion is for County Administrator Search. I make a motion to conduct a nationwide search for a new county administrator as determined by the board. Some of the previous candidates will be included in the search, and the county will follow all procurement laws to hire the national search firm. And that is my motion.
Thank you, sir. What about a second? Mr. Barxdale was second. Any discussion on that? I know we have some comments, correct?
Nope.
Any comments?
We're good. I made the motion. I'm, I'm good with the motion.
All right. Go ahead, cast your vote then. And that passes unanimously, seven, yes. All righty. Any other matters from the work session? Have I missed anything?
That's it.
Thank you. Board Member Reports, and we'll start with you, Mr. Scares.
I don't know if I need to say anything else after tonight, but I will tell you that I was willing to work with anybody on this board, but my priority is to be accountable to the citizens of my district, and I will continue to be accountable and I will continue to ask for accountability and transparency from this leadership. So buckle up, buttercup.
Mr. Cheshire?
Yes, I want to thank everybody for being here tonight. I also want to congratulate the graduates of twenty-twenty-two. I know a lot of you are getting ready to go to college, and I would like to encourage those going to college that they would also consider trade schools. I'm a graduate of DCC. I took industrial electronics. I'm not gonna tell you how many years ago that was, but it has served me well in thirty-plus years of being in the community, and I'm very grateful for the instructors I had. It's not bad to use your hands to do things, welding. It's nice to be independent. I know in the years that I've, I've been in trade, in trades, you meet some awesome people. And if I have a plumbing problem, if I haven't learned how to do it, I know who to call because I've worked with them. So I encourage, if you haven't decided on a major, think about trade schools. Thank you again for the, a good evening.
Thank you, Mr., thank you, Mr. Cheshire. Mr. Dudley?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Folks in the audience, I want to thank you guys for coming. I think the word of tonight is endurance. Two hours and seventeen minutes, we've sit here and we're getting ready to get out. And I've said all along too, through the meetings, that it's okay. It's okay to come, express your opinion, voice your opinion, and to get it out because you are a voting citizen and you do have the right, and thank you so much for coming out. Also want to give a big shout out to fire and rescue. And the reason I say that, these two gentlemen right here and several others, it's a gentleman back here, and Chris Slimp used to be involved with fire and rescue last Friday, the thirteenth. One of my backdoor neighbors' house caught on fire. And correct me if I'm wrong as far as the department's Chris, but Hurt, Gratina, Renan, and was there another one? Mr. Meeks? Was there?
Java.
Java? Rice one, okay. Those folks came out and did a phenomenal, phenomenal job, and I'm proud of them. My neighbor, luckily, he escaped. He, and it's sad that these guys go to tragedies and have to see bad things. And my neighbor lost everything he had. He come out with the clothes on his back and his shoes on fire, and that's sad. And if you will, lift up the name of Jeff Kelly. He is my backdoor neighbor, and just wishing him the best. You know, you, you hear of people losing all they got in tragedy, but man alive, when you, when you looking right at it in your back door, that is so sad. And then, but thanks again for the fire and rescue, for coming out. Appreciate you guys. Hands out for you. Thank you so much. Just can't say enough of them. Yeah, let's give them a hand. That's fine. And, I'm sorry?
Fire and rescue, you got two possible two fires. And I got oxygen bottles loaded.
Yes. Yep.
You can't let that happen.
And folks, if you didn't hear that, there were two firemen that went into the fire. They, the guy had oxygen bottles on the inside. They got hot and exploded on the two. They had to go to the hospital. One, did you say he went to the burn center?
He went to the burn center.
Okay. You know, I'm, I'm not gonna mention a name or anything, but, you know, God knows the name. Let's lift them up in prayer. How about that? And that's, that's all we can do. And my friend, if that's all we can do, we got it made. Amen? Also, thank you for, folks that, that, that made this meeting happen. All of the folks that are here tonight, Mr. Monday, you're doing, you're doing okay. I mean, I mean, I'm not gonna blow your head up, but you're doing okay. Thank you for your job. Mr. Jay Vaden, you do a good job. Caleb, always a wonderful job. I want to thank the board. We've been here since today, since two o'clock in these meetings, and honestly, you, you get tired after a long, long day. So thank, thank everybody on this board. Appreciate all your hard work. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Mr. Warren?
I gotta follow all that. Please don't.
All that? Come on now.
I too would like to echo Tim's comments on congratulating the graduates and hope them a bright future, whether it's going to work, going to trade school, or going to four-year university, it doesn't matter. Get out there and be a good citizen and do what you can to improve your community. Also like to, to let the board look at in the future and maybe have staff look at revising our citizen service form to include the signature of the person completing it. We don't have that on there now, and it would just be validation to, as a backup, to be sure that whoever is entering the form actually signs and attests to that they completed the form. Lastly, I'd like to request prayer from everyone for the citizens involved in the communities involved in the recent mass shootings that occurred over the weekend. What a tragedy. When you think about the problems we have, they're extremely minor compared to what's going on in a lot of other places. So let's be thankful for what we have here and not get too upset about what we don't have sometimes because we're, we are blessed. We're blessed so far. So I certainly hope that will continue. And also like to ask that we continue to pray for the first responders for those tragedies and the tragedy that my colleague just mentioned. You know, these folks do a super job when they go out, but trust me, when they go into a situation of a mass shooting like that and like this one that occurred, that's trauma that is involved for them. And, you know, we need, we need to be praying for those folks.
That's right.
We need to be praying for those folks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Mr. Dalton?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to thank everybody for coming out tonight. Want to thank our fire and rescue people, our fire, our sheriff's department, and remember the fallen officers of this week, and also remember our graduates, which is the folk about.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Barxdale?
We have a great staff and we had a great audience. Thanks for coming. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Barxdale. In closing, as you well know, May is a month of memorials for remembrance, and we just celebrated Mother's Day, which is a very special time, and I just wanted to thank all the mamas for what they do. It was also, this is National Police Week, Sunday was Peace Officers Memorial Day, where we remember officers that's been killed in the line of duty. And again, I want to express my gratitude to my colleagues for passing these two resolutions to remember these two troopers. They had been forgotten. We have a nice memorial in the courtyard to remember the eight members of the sheriff's office, but there was nothing for these two troopers, and now we've made that whole, and I'm grateful for that. We're coming up on, end of the month, Memorial Day, and I do want to encourage people to remember, there's a difference between Memorial Day and Veterans Day. Several of us are veterans. We get remembered in November, but we didn't make the ultimate sacrifice. We are not and should not be remembered on Memorial Day because that is not the, the day that you remember active-duty military or retired. It's for those that died serving this country. A lot of good comments here. I echo a lot of what was said, particularly about the graduates. We, we've got a lot of promising young people going out to college and into the job field. In this past Sunday night, there was a wonderful special on Sixty Minutes about the Charleswood Plantation. And, and, and I watched it, and I don't want, I don't want to say how much I enjoyed it because it was so heartbreaking, but I really did. It was so enlightening and it was such a wonderful story, and I, I think that we ought to collectively be proud that we have a, a story like that to be told. It does bring back a lot of bad memories for people and, and while I could say I understand that, I really don't, but it's a part of our past, but it has such a beautiful, bright future for what it's gonna be used for, and that, that's, that's very nice. And, and I knew Mr. Thompson and I know Dexter Miller, and they did a pretty good job acting, so, or, or not acting, but, you know, being on the show. But anyway, having said that, thank you all for coming. I do want to give a shout out for fire and rescue. When I say shout out, next time, Ben, don't shout out. That's okay. You're forgiven, but you had a good reason. County Administrator Report, so I'll start with you, Mr. Hunt. Let me start with you.
No, no comments. I'm ready to go home. About to turn into a pumpkin, I think.
What in the world? Okay, Mr. Monday, our interim administrator. You have the floor, sir.
Yes, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, thank you very much for your patience in getting through a very extensive agenda. I know you've been here since two o'clock and you made a lot of progress this evening, and thank you for your time and your commitment to the citizens. And knowing that you're gonna do a national search for the county administrator, I want to thank you for the confidence that you've shown in my leadership and that of the Berkeley Group to serve the needs of the county. I can say it is a pleasure working in local government in a community that is near and dear to me, and it is a pleasure to work with the county staff. They work so hard behind the scenes between your meetings so that your meetings do not go any longer, and I want to commend them for their work and say that I do enjoy serving them as well. And I too am ready to go home. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My watch is broken.
Well said, Mr. Monday. Thank you for all you do, and, and again, staff, it's too many of y'all to name, but thank y'all so much. Having said that, make a motion to adjourn. Second? Second?
You got it.